Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Very Happy New Year. Would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, again, the Board wishes to extend a very Happy New Year to all our residents. And the only announcement we have this evening is the Board of Health Office closed this week and next due to staff absent. Call the business office for any urgent items for Board of Health. Otherwise, leave a voice message and the Secretary will return phone calls on January 19th. Next, we have approval of minutes of December 21st, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, Mr. Laro, the only absent?
Yes. Is there a motion to accept the...
I make the motion to accept the motion for the meeting of December 21st.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have invited guests, speakers, and presenters. We have Attorney Lauren Goldberg from Copelman &amp; Page Town Council Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, we asked if you could come tonight because you know the predicament that we're in right now. So, just before we decide whether to stay with Petrini or go with you folks, we just had, don't know what type of services, I mean, we know legal services, but you know, what type of, as far as like the on-call thing, you know, how quick you can get back to us in an emergency request? And then how quick your normal, our normal requests, you know, would turn around.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to members of the Board of Selectmen. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. As you might imagine, we're thrilled that Barbara St. Andre is rejoining the firm as a partner after several years with Petrini &amp; Associates. Barbara used to be a member at Copelman &amp; Page, a principal, and the same procedures essentially that were in place when Barbara was at the firm earlier. And actually, I had served for several years as a primary contact as well, as well as a few other people at the firm. But our basic approach to Town Council Services is that you would continue to have your lead council be Barbara. She would be responsible for kind of allocating work based on what that type of work is. So, one of the benefits of a firm like Copelman &amp; Page is, for example, if you had an elections problem, I have been dealing with elections since 1996. I was at the Secretary of State's Elections Division. So Barbara would likely turn to me and say, "Lauren, can you help with this elections issue?" But if it was kind of routine, regular municipal council services, let's say land use scenario where Barbara is an utmost expert, Barbara would either do the work herself or supervise it, just like she does right now. So, from your perspective, my expectation is that it would seem like a seamless transition, Barbara, with Barbara continuing to be the face, but that you would have the enhanced, you know, capabilities of the firm. In fact, we had sent Greg Corbo, who is also a partner at Copelman &amp; Page, and Brian Mazur, who focuses mostly on labor and employment law, to come and meet the Board several, maybe it was about a year ago at this point. And so, you know, you would have your own small team of people. So, even though you'd have the benefit of the expertise of the entire firm, you would be used to working with particular people. So Barbara, and then, you know, for example, you might have a real estate contact who you would always use for real estate matters. And all of us would be available when and as needed. So if you called Barbara and she couldn't get back to, because she was in court, let's say, she would have a backup person who would call you, and it would be the same person every time. So you would know exactly who you were dealing with and who was responsible to you. And in the event of a need for special services, there would be someone at the firm that would do that versus having to look to outside council to fill that void.
Right, okay.
So in terms of emergencies, I mean, I'll give you my card when I leave here today, but you could always call me directly if you couldn't reach Barbara. I'm available by cellphone, I'm available by email, and also, you know, by, you can text, you can, however you want to, to reach me is fine. And your whole small team, you would have their contact information. So you'd have Barbara's information, you'd have my information. And, you know, I'm the managing attorney at Copelman &amp; Page. There's really, you know, if you can't get me, we've got an issue. And I, you know, I take that very seriously. I not only manage the firm itself as a business, but I also represent clients directly. And I understand how important it is that you hear back from people right away. We take that very seriously.
Saying that right away, the Chief of Police has an issue at 3:00 in the morning. And makes a call because he needs a, some kind of a response from you people on a situation.
Yep.
What's your callback time?
Well, if he calls at 3:00 in the morning, one of us is going to answer the phone. I mean, that's a fact. And if it, if someone didn't answer the phone for any reason, which I can't imagine, you know, first thing in the morning, as soon as someone checks their voicemail, they would call back. There's, there should be no delay whatsoever, especially, you know, there shouldn't be a delay anyway, but especially in an emergency. I mean, my phone, my cellphone will ring in the middle of the afternoon on a Sunday. I'm on the phone with Selectmen, I'm on the phone with the town manager. In the winter, with all of the emergencies that we had, I mean, I can't tell you how many people call me directly at home to say, "What can we do? We want to do X, Y, or Z. Can we do that?" We call back, you know, I answered the phone at home. We call back right away if for whatever reason that we missed a call like that.
But that's you. Do you have other people? Do you have some kind of, I know, on-call, if somebody's on-call for weeks, another person? Is that how that works?
If, let's just say it's a labor and employment issue, okay? So it's a, it's a police issue that involves a labor issue, middle of the night, you know, an emergency. There would be a labor and employment contact, or Brian Mazur, who I referenced earlier, who would be available to speak to the Chief at any time. So the Chief would have Brian's home phone number and Brian's cellphone number. And in reality, the Chief would rather talk to Brian than to me. If he couldn't reach the Chief though, if he couldn't reach Brian though...
That's true, what you said.
Sorry.
That's okay. He could certainly call me, and I would reach Brian. And that is how, how we make things work. And no matter what, either Barbara or me are available to make sure that you get the services that you need, absolutely.
We got to make sure that the Chief has the support, plus the fight department.
Yes.
Because he plays a dual role.
Yeah, Brian Mazur, who, now I've mentioned a few times, but Brian, the way that the firm is organized internally is our labor and employment attorneys, while they are general municipal attorneys as well, all the attorneys at the firm are general municipal employees, but attorneys, but then also have some areas of special expertise. So Brian Mazur is the person that we had originally proposed to serve in that capacity. And Brian is, he's absolutely fantastic, and, you know, I can tell you for sure that Brian would be available when and as needed. The way that, that the labor and employment work is organized is that the particular attorney is responsible with and to the town. So Brian would know the collective bargaining agreements. He would know the status of any grievances. He would know any, you know, ongoing enforcement issues. And so Brian would be keyed in to all of that, any employment issues, absolutely. So Brian would know if things were headed in a direction where he needed to, you know, be hyper vigilant about making sure to get back, he would certainly know that. And in addition, you know, he would keep Barbara aware of all the things that she needed to. And typically what we do is, we like to have the primary contact attorney, who's Barbara, copied on all correspondence back and forth, all emails. That way, she knows just what's going on and, you know, and she's able to stay up to date. And Barbara, as you know, is quite talented. But again, I think one of the real benefits of Copelman &amp; Page is that we have people whose entire careers have been spent with a particular focus. So, you know, Barbara, for example, loves land use and zoning and general town meeting. That's how Brian is about labor and employment law. And how I am about elections.
So at town meetings, we can expect Barbara's support?
Absolutely.
How about the term of these rates?
So we're willing to, we had proposed a different rate structure than I know that you had with Petrini &amp; Associates. And our rate structure was a proposal for $180 an hour. And that is a regular municipal rate for us. That's, you know, intentionally on the lower side to provide you with what we really think is the support that cities and towns need, especially in these lean years. And our rates have been mostly static since 2008. We, you know, we have raised rates at $5 in a few towns since that time, but that's really as much as we ever do at one time. And we typically, you know, keep our rates steady for at least a couple of years or three years. And we would only increase it after providing you with notice for budgeting purposes. I think that you'll find that we are very affordable. I think we were when we were here before. And we're very efficient because there's many situations that we've seen that are similar. Now, not exactly the same, because no one town and no one situation is the same exact situation as another. But it gives us a place to start. And so, you know, let's just take, for example, the idea of banning plastic bags. So when that first started, we did all the legal research. We were really kind of ahead of the curve. We sent out memoranda to municipal clients on the different issues. And then we helped each town individually that was interested in it deal with those issues. Same with the no smoking in public places, same with medical marijuana. So those types of things, you know, we believe we bring a lot of value forward because you're not spending money on us reinventing the wheel. You're spending money on implementing it to be applicable and appropriate for your town. And so, you know, we really do find that our legal fees, that we can control, that you can control, are very reasonable. There are times when a particular case is driven by, you know, when someone sues the town, at which point, you know, you're responding to legal action that isn't of your own making and is harder to control. And litigation has that kind of a way. But what we'll always do is come down here, explain to you what the litigation is, what the possibilities are, the different routes that you could take, and what the risks and benefits might be of those. The decision is up to you. We'll never tell you how to make a decision, but we'll certainly tell you, you know, this is a more defensible way to go forward, or this is a more risky way to go forward. And here's what you can expect. And that is, you know, something that we believe very strongly. And we never want to be the sixth Selectman, you know, trying to direct the way that you, the elected officials of the town, the policymakers, make decisions. But we want you to have the information that you need to make good decisions.
Chief, do you have any questions?
Okay. All right, well, if I can answer any other questions, I would be happy to. And I will leave you my cards, I have my direct contact information.
All right.
And I would be pleased to answer anything else. So thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
I think if you don't want me to stick around...
No, I think we're all, yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I heard you, Nellie.
All right, so... Now we need to make a decision on...
My initial thought in the opinion was with strength of Barbara, given that she's going to be now the attorney, rates aren't going to change significantly.
The rate would actually be lowered because Petrini is at 190, and they're at 180, so...
We took the experience with the money. And so we took the experience and the higher money when we went there, but we knew, you know, the glowing recommendations from Joe and Layden was, you know, and the issues that were before us, we wanted to keep that experience in our pocket.
I just, I just, Copelman &amp; Page cost us a lot of money in the past. I know it was a big series of...
It depends on, depends on what's going on in town. I mean, there's some years that they were lean, you know? It depends on how often you're calling them and what legal issues you have in front of you. I don't think the legal issues are going to change. How they divvy up work and bill work, maybe that's a different story.
No, I do like the fact that we'll still have Barbara.
That'd be the only thing that Barbara's still on board.
Are there no repercussions in leaving Petrini?
No. No, there's really only one, maybe, actually only one ongoing matter that would need to be moved over that Amanda Zaretti was working on involving P&amp;W.
Oh, yeah, like...
That's really the only open thing. Everything else Barbara's been dealing with directly, so...
In your past experience with Copelman &amp; Page, you have any issues?
None at all, no.
But you went through that whole scenario with that office?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Because, now, Petrini's still, who's, who would they give us, that younger kid?
Peter Mello.
Yeah.
He came to the conservation meeting, and he was also at town meeting. Chris Brown does a lot of their labor work. So if the Chief had issues, it would be Chris Brown that he would deal with.
So they're not going to give us the years of experience that Copelman &amp; Page can?
Right.
Does the whole experience is moving on?
All right, kind of a no-brainer. So is there a motion to...
We'll make a motion that we use, Copelman &amp; Page.
So we'll have to, the motion's going to be to terminate the contract with Petrini?
Nope, it would just be to transfer all of our files to Attorney St. Andre and authorize me to sign the certification form. Or authorize the Chair, whichever.
Well, I think I'd have to authorize the Chair to sign it.
All right, that's fine. All right, that's the amendment to the, okay? Is there a second?
There is.
So all in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, very good. Board committees and department heads are not scheduled this evening. Our first public forum.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. A couple of things that...
An address.
Tomville Tennessee Street, Millville. After sitting through the last board meeting and going over the articles that were in the one socket call, I just have a couple of questions and, or things that were a little unsettled in my own head that I would like to get some clarification on. Because it was kind of gone over briefly. We said, "Oh, we cleared it up." And I don't really feel that the second article that was put in the paper on the 18th really cleared up anything. It actually kind of stirred things up a little more in my head. I've read the articles. I've seen the emails sent to the calls editor. And my concern is, again, and this has been going on for years with me, the editorializing that our Executive Secretary does when she's sending these emails.
Listen, we're not going to point fingers tonight. You're going to talk what you have to talk about without pointing fingers at anybody.
You know what? I have a legitimate concern.
Tom.
I am being, I am being...
It's my meeting, it's my meeting.
No, 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 it's our meeting, Ron.
It's my right to hold the order, and I don't want finger pointing. Just say when you're complaining.
I am not out of order. So thank you.
I'm just telling you to keep the fingers to yourself.
Well, I'm going to say...
Speak about whatever you want, but please do not use names and finger point. That's all. I just want to keep order.
I am fully in order and using my right as a citizen.
Okay, Tom, go ahead. Go ahead.
Things were said, like, people were intentionally providing misleading and inaccurate information. And that Mr. Fitzgerald was perhaps doing an old friend a favor. There's no business for that, especially coming from the town hall. That's undermining. It's insubordination. It's so many, it's wrong on so many levels. And to suggest that, when you can go on YouTube and get any of these meetings on YouTube, you know, again, I think it's poor, if not even means for termination. I see that other articles, or somebody has proposed another article, or not an article, but her own proposal, and that's fine, you know? But I'm not sure how that proposal will help the town. And I think that's something that needs to be brought to the town as a whole, as opposed to being alluded to in an email or a paper. It also says that our current Executive Secretary is at the disposal, or follows the direction, rather, of the Board of Selectmen. So I'd like to know who authorized that letter to be written in rebuttal to come from the Executive Director, Executive Secretary's office.
So Tommy, I'm just going to jump in here. So, the first article, I don't know how that made it to the paper. And nobody authorized that?
Because it's on YouTube. You can watch it on YouTube. And if Mr. Fitzgerald chose to write that article, from what he saw on YouTube...
Then he should have watched the whole program.
Okay, but that's fine. I don't disagree with you, Tim.
If you read the minutes...
I don't disagree with you at all.
Tom, I'm talking, I'm talking, I didn't interrupt you. If you read the minutes to all those meetings that he, that he talked about, excuse me, all the, he misworded a lot of stuff that was in the minutes that we voted on and all approved. Helen just made the corrections to his, she did bullet points to every, every bullet point he hit.
Okay, answer me.
And with the correction from minutes of meetings that we all voted and approved. That is where the information comes from. He misunderstood what he heard on YouTube, maybe. Maybe he should have also got copies of the minutes that we voted and approved. Because we don't vote and approve the YouTube...
I agree with you.
Okay, because...
I agree with you, hon. But I would like to know, okay? My answer still wasn't, I still didn't get it.
Nobody approved the second, the email, the rebuttal. And nobody, and this board didn't approve that, didn't even talk about an article going in from point A. Okay? And we've discussed that before. If any one member wants to talk to the newspaper, go right ahead, it's your free will, okay? But don't use my name on it, on an article that say, "I voted to do something, and that was incorrect," what was in there.
Well, the vote was taken. It just, after legal determination, it was found not to be a good vote. Which leads me to a question, was anything else voted on in that time?
Everything was fixed. If you watch YouTube, you see that.
No, I was just asking. So then, why was Mr. Opposa called out in regarding to, he should take partial blame and things like that? Again, that's the editorializing, things we don't need. We don't need, this goes back for years. From back when I was on the Board of Health, I had concerns about this. And I still have those concerns, you know? And what was the other thing here? We're calling, you say, the paper, or Mr. Fitzgerald shouldn't use names, but yet Ms. Coffin can?
I think the whole thing is pretty sad. Yeah. I just, you know what? I thought those days were over. Would they be back in a minute again? I think if we, if we put more effort into bringing revenue into this town, instead of this board, buttonhead, and worrying about whether somebody's going to keep their job or how their job's going to be shifted, we'd be a heck of a lot better shape. No, we're putting too much effort into one little thing that means nothing, into an item that has kept us out of trouble with the state for 10 years roughly, okay? And we're worried about something that has done no harm to this town as far as the management of it or anything else, okay?
That's in your opinion.
Yeah, I know, because the facts show when we get audited, Tom, okay? The facts show when we get audited, that the management team that we have in that office, and it's not just Helen, there's Helen and a few other girls, and now we have a gentleman out there as well. They've kept order, management-wise and revenue-wise in this town. Everything's straight with the DOR. They like us. That's a good sign, okay? So, give me a reason to get rid of somebody. Just give me one, because I don't have one, okay? Let's take some of this effort, okay? This is a new year. Let's start something new around here. Let's take this effort that we're all putting into this craziness, all right? Let's get this report from the DOR. Let's decide whether we want a town management manager or a town administrator, and what type of a manager or administrator we want. Let's go get one and let them decide who they want as their assistant in the front office. And let's worry about getting revenue in this town to keep the tax rate low. That's why people love Millville, because we do still have a low tax rate throughout the state, if you can believe it. This is crazy, it's ridiculous, it's unprofessional the way we're constantly having these types of meetings. I want a good meeting. I want a meeting saying, "This is what we're going to do to bring in revenue." And that's not happening. This is ridiculous. I'm embarrassed.
Mr. Barrett, you know...
I'm embarrassed for the town.
I think you should take your own advice, and maybe some of the members sitting at this table should also.
I, my efforts are to put revenue into this town and to be fair to all, okay? I'm letting you sit there right now, ain't I?
Because you have no grounds to make me move.
I can, I can ask you to leave, because there is a time limit, and it's up...
You absolutely could ask me to leave. And I may be back at the second one.
I don't care, Tom.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't do that. I think I made my point tonight.
Yeah, you did make your point, Tom, but...
I think we all, I don't disagree with everything you said, Ron, I don't. I think you're right.
Yeah.
And that is what I would like, just, I'm pointing not as, just to do something with my hands.
I know I'm right, I know I'm right. Anybody in business knows I'm right. And I'm right.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, everybody needs to make that same effort. Everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not just some of us.
Yeah.
All of us. And I'll include me on it. Okay? But editorializing, whether it's from you or me, or, that's the kind of stuff that needs to stop, is what I'm saying.
I could not agree more.
There is not one person at this table who doesn't feel that they're doing the right thing. And though we do not agree on where that finish line is, we are all working in the best interests. Now, do we have some fundamental differences on where the town needs to go? Oh, yeah, we sure do.
Yeah.
We sure do. But the fact is, is, you know, we can't even set a date. We can't, we can't have open discussions, because everybody's stepping lightly around everything. We need an honest-to-good discussion to discuss a lot of the issues in regards to the government and to regards to some of the issues, some of the things you've brought up tonight. And I've expressed in the past my concerns with emails, the tone. We've had problems in other departments. So I mean, we need to focus on what we can, what we can handle and what we can deal with, and go forward with some of the things that we're doing instead of just waiting for the next meeting and waiting for the next meeting. I think some things should have some action.
We have our DOR report.
Right.
So that's, that's it. So with the next meeting, we're going to decide on our own whether or without the report. We got to, June is not that far away.
Mr. Chairman, is there anything we can do to expedite that? That report was due in November.
I communicated with Tara Lynch today.
Before I step down, I would just like to say, I truly believe that everybody, every one of you are up here, and myself, we're here for the good of the town. You're obviously not doing it for the money or for the glory, because there's none of that in any of it. So we can respectfully disagree at times, but we do all need to look on how we can move this town forward without the editorializing or the, how we can work more together as opposed to apart. I don't just, I agree with that 100%.
Well said, Tommy.
So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And I wish you all a great New Year, healthy and prosper, prosperity too.
Thanks, Tommy.
Thanks, sir.
Tara Lynch indicated that they recently instituted a lengthier, multi-person editorial process. Tara Lynch indicated that they recently instituted a lengthier, multi-person editorial process that was impacted by the year-end holidays. Currently, the report only needs final sign-off. She's expecting it this week. Then she would need to speak with me to go over it before they issue it. That's where it stands.
So it sounds like it'll be there next meeting.
And she said the same thing in December when I emailed her.
So we get the report. If we get the report this week, that's that's fine. We have time to review it before the next meeting, but. Well, whatever it is, what it is at this point, I mean, they still. But I think we should put it on the agenda for the next meeting, whether or without the report. Start. We can't, we can't hold off any longer, I I don't think.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. Going forward, when an issue like this comes up with a newspaper article or the like, my feeling is that we, to respond to that, we should discuss it as a board. And I'm just wondering what the the protocol and procedure is.
I I would like the board, no article to show up in a paper with all all five of us chatting about it and agreeing that's the right thing to do.
The first article shouldn't have.
The second one doesn't happen without the first one.
I'm just saying, if our executive secretary, who works for us, gets slammed by an outside whoever, I think you should bring it to us. And then we decide how we're gonna address it. Because if she's getting hit with that, it's also affecting this board, which is also affecting this town. And with that said, going forward, I think Helen should stand down on that rebuttal. Talk to us. We tell her what we feel about it, how we should go about it, and then proceed to the best interests of the town and also our executive secretary.
Yeah, and if it involves, you know, personalities and the like, you know, we should be looking at executive session kind of things.
Then it is what it is, Joe. You know, we, if we have to have it, we have to have it.
If people are gonna point fingers, such as they did in emails throughout our group, then that needs to be done a proper way, and that's not being done a proper way.
That's what I'm saying. I think the board.
Because nobody likes to be called out in the paper, and nobody likes to be called out amongst their peers, especially when it's not true.
I understand that. So for the best interest of this board and our executive secretary, I think we need to put a handle on that and nothing be said unless we discuss it.
I agree.
Nothing goes out, like Bob said, at all, until we discuss it. Because what happens is, as far as I'm concerned, you're feeding the fire. And it goes back and forth and back and forth. It gets more uglier and and just, it's gotta stop. That's not how to do proper business.
I will share this, and I wasn't going to, but I will share this. I had no knowledge of anything that happened until Mr. Repose called me late one evening and said, what the heck is going on? And I said, I don't know. He says, check your selectman email. So I jumped off the couch and I went and checked my email, and I go, what the heck happened? No word of light. What the, I don't, Joe, I have no idea what's going on. He had no idea what was going on. I said, I'm working tomorrow. Can you try to locate the paper? And we'll try to figure out what's going on.
Well, like I said.
Good, it gets better. So the next day, I get a message from Mr. Fitzgerald and says, can you call me? And I said, more than happy to. So I called him on my lunch break. And I explained to him that he missed a meeting. He missed the May twenty-fourth meeting, and he says, I didn't know that. So I explained to him what happened. I said, you need to go back into YouTube, and you need to find that meeting, and you will get all of your information right there. And I said, where did you get this first information? He says, I watch your meetings every week. And if you go back, he did the green, the whole electricity, he did the town meeting. We've been in the newspaper. Nobody in Millville buys it.
Usually in the back page.
You know, but whatever. But that is what occurred. That is what occurred on my part. But then at the last meeting, to be put in legal ease and almost threatening things is not proper either. So we don't, I mean, the email is one thing, but the two papers that were never discussed in last week's packet is wrong. And I could have used that as my own checklist against this board. So you know what, if you can pick up the phone and you can call me and say, what are these agenda items? Then pick up the phone and say, did you call the call? Because I have no problems. I'll tell you when I call the call. I don't have a problem with that.
Last week, all I wanted to do was thank the, once I could call in public for fixing the article. And then I wasn't gonna bring up any emails in public meetings. Just didn't seem like the, the emails were wrong, and that would have been just as wrong, in my opinion. Why, why embarrass any one or two people in the, on the board and on television?
Oh, it wouldn't have embarrassed me, because there was nothing in there that was truth about me.
Right, but. The fact is, that's all I was trying to avoid is.
It was embarrassing to the executive secretary, you, and Mr. Baker, to be quite honest.
And to me, really. All my email was.
I couldn't have said it better.
Couldn't have said it better than what Bob said.
Right.
Okay, and.
And Bob referenced somebody calling, and which I will say, Bob, you probably.
And what else did I say, Jennifer?
There's two of us, there's two of us sitting here that have.
Yeah, Ms. Wing, what did I say? I also said what? That I will not speak about this anymore on emails.
No, you did the proper thing.
Yeah, because I didn't want to break any ethics law.
You did, you did confirm, confirm his, his thoughts.
Right, that it.
By agreeing with him.
That it was unbelievable.
Just saying.
That the article was unbelievable. Right, and there was nothing wrong with saying that either. That wasn't pointing a finger to anybody.
So.
So, so again, don't point the finger at me, because I.
No, I just said what you, I just repeated what was in your email.
So, um, okay, so anyway, moving on, any other public form? Correspondence is none tonight. Appointments and resignations, we have none tonight. Executive secretary's report, we have the M E S playground update.
Yes, I did get an email back from Superintendent Tamelberger. He met with the chairman of the school committee, and they respectfully requested a meeting with the board in March. They indicated that they were very busy with budget season right now. They asked what our two meetings were in March. I did give him those dates, and he said he'd get back to me.
All right.
And then just a couple of other quick things that came up today, since I did the agenda. Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned that Joe Layden wanted to meet with the board regarding the community compact. I was in touch with him last week. He indicated he didn't realize we had already applied. So he said it's probably premature for him to meet with the board at this point. So he decided that he didn't need to come in. I heard from Natalia today in the assessor's office that the American Legion issue is still ongoing. They did get some information requests from D O R, which they replied to and responded to. And that's still under review. And that was it.
All right, we have no old business tonight. New business is a special town meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, there is on correspondence. Mr. Shanahan is not gonna be lenient like Marilyn was on signatures, so we all gotta make sure that we get down here. And Helen attached the dates of, for the year of all the signatures that'll, for payroll, other than any emergency vouchers that may have to get signed or anything. But everything's here. So if we can all make that effort, because he, he said it, he'll stop payroll and stop vendor warrants if he doesn't have to be signatures, so. That wouldn't be good. So, sorry about that. That was the correspondence. So the special and annual town meetings, scheduled for May, May ninth, two thousand sixteen. Here's all the dates of all the, um, opening and, and opening the warrants, the drafts and everything. We would be looking for a motion to call special annual town meetings for Monday, May ninth, two thousand sixteen, at six thirty P M and seven P M, respectively, respectively, and further to open the warrants effective immediately with March twenty-first, two thousand sixteen as the deadline for submission of articles, with the intent of the board to close the warrants at the regular meeting on March twenty-first. All in favor? Aye. So next we have the members' forum. So Jennifer, I apologize to Joe earlier. I was on vacation last week and I didn't get his email. So maybe just to make sure, when, when you, when anyone emails me for adding something to the agenda, just C C Helen, just in the event that I don't pick up the phone or, Helen's got my, all my phone numbers for emergencies. That's, so if there's an hour to the deadline of, 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 of setting an agenda, she, she knows how to get in touch with me. So if you C C her, I'm gonna say yes, put it on, but.
No, I.
Yeah.
I, I explained it in my email.
Had I thought about her doing the agenda last week, when I was, I would have told Joe to set the agenda last week. And I forgot that I was, forgot about that, because I was more interested in finally going on vacation, so. Anyway, so my apologies on that, and we'll get that on.
Clarification, there's really not a problem if I copy the whole board.
No, no.
To you as well as.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine. Yeah. The more the better, at least. Somebody's gonna get the message now. You know what I mean? So if you C C her as well, you know, then we know the message is there. So that was that. Now, uh, so couple, maybe, maybe it's been a month now since Mr. Fuat sent a letter. And he's, I mean, we haven't made a committee to, a search committee for an administrator or manager, whatever we decide we're gonna, and so he'd like to be on that committee, on that search committee. Once we decide what the, what the role is gonna be. But I think that right now, seeing it's so easy finding help throughout the town, I think we should start announcing now that we would like to have a search committee for that position. We don't really have the job description together yet, but if we start looking for people interested in helping, when we do have that job description, hopefully we'll have a, at least a five-member committee.
Committee has to have a charge.
So, yeah, so at least for now, if we announce that we're looking for.
Yeah, because I had a couple of questions. I mean, I know we're waiting for D O R. I think we need to have some open and honest discussion. We've talked about that. But I also, you know, I think of like when we allow the police chief to hire their personnel, and we allow the building inspector to get their clerk, and this person to hire their secretary. Why are we asking, why are we asking another committee to find someone who's gonna work for us?
Same reason why a school committee takes a search committee for a superintendent.
Yeah, but they do not hire. They interview and weed the process.
That's right.
And then the, then the finalists are given.
We would do the hiring of the.
That's not what this said.
Two or three finalists. I, well, I don't care what this says. I wouldn't.
I'm just saying, I mean.
This is just an example.
I've been a part of a few executive secretary searches, and I think once we had a screening committee, you know, and it does work, because you have different jobs and different personnels and different interests. But I think in the end, we need to hire the person for the job.
Oh, correct.
That we, that we need.
Right.
Reading it out and getting those first interviews done is nice. But I don't think it's their responsibility to hire our secretary.
I never said that they would hire. I said a search committee. Never said hire.
I think in here it says hire, or in their paperwork it says hire.
That's, this is an example.
And this is a lot of money. Yeah, this is a headhunter.
I'm not gonna hire a headhunter. We got no money to give them unless they wanna do it for free.
It was an option that was thrown out there.
But if we had some people interview, I mean, I don't know how many. I mean, unfortunately, we only had one applicant for accountant. I mean, not that we got a bad accountant. He does great. I don't mean to sound that way, but I hope we get more than one applicant for town administrator, you know? But if we just get the word out now to get through the town, people, you know, who's interested in being on a screening team and when the time comes, hopefully we'll have that small handful of people.
I would like this to be part of our discussion. I think everybody has ideas. I think this is one. Not saying it's valid, but.
So just, let's just get the word out now that we want volunteers.
As I said at the last meeting, I would like a workshop. A date set, something. Maybe we can start some conversation before the D O R, if people wanna wait for the D O R report.
So you don't think we should have a screening committee?
I think we should have a conversation about all possibilities.
Well, let's get the word out. I think we should get the word out that we may possibly want some volunteers to get the conversation going through the town now, not wait.
But that's not, that's not what we've decided.
I'm not saying that, that we might want volunteers for this, to get the conversation going, that in the event we have a search committee, there will be a handful of people, hopefully, at the door waiting.
I think that word is already out. I don't think you have to worry about that.
Okay, Jennifer, you got it. Either way, you wanna do it.
I'm just saying, I mean, if we're gonna have a conversation, let's have a whole conversation.
I'm having a conversation right now, all one way of it.
But we've all said that we're going to wait for this D O R report, and now we wanna do a search. I mean, what are we doing?
I'm not gonna do a, I'm saying, let's get the word out to people so we can have a team ready if, in the event we want it. No, you don't wanna do it. You don't wanna be proactive. That's fine.
That's me, I'm proactive. That's it. You've got me nailed.
So our next meeting is January nineteenth at seven P M.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
Can we put it on the town thing and all that?
No.
No?
No. No, we're not doing that. We haven't discussed it yet, so I thought that's what I was doing here. I thought that's why I had this on the agenda, but that's okay. No, it's, it's over, John.
You can have three people vote. Go for it.
I'm just, I'm not saying we're gonna definitely do it and what their description's gonna, their job description's gonna be, but let's get the word out.
A month ago, I couldn't get a date, just a, just a date for a meeting. I couldn't get a date for a meeting. Nobody would set a date for a meeting, and now we wanna say, oh, we might have a search committee.
This is why we're going nowhere. All right, next meeting.
Right, because you would set a date.
Wait a minute, we're done. Jennifer, we're done. We're done, Jennifer.
You might be done.
I'm done. We'll have a workshop. When do you wanna do it? I just said that the nineteenth, we're gonna put this on the agenda, with or without the D O R report, because we can't keep waiting for them. I mean, thank you to them for doing this at no cost to the town, but June's coming real fast now. It's, it's January. And, you know, winter seems long, but it really isn't. It goes away quick.
We need to work out the kinks before town meeting, because that's where all the funding and the positioning, all that.
We don't have time. We don't have time. That's why I'm saying, let's get a group of people willing to help, and if we're gonna need them, they'll be, they'll be there, you know? I'm not saying appoint them now. See if people are interested. They'll, they'll start talking about it. But, all right, let's, just stonewall it.
My point of view so many times.
Tuesday, January nineteenth, seven P M. We're gonna have our next meeting, and it's Tuesday because of Martin Luther King holiday on that Monday, the eighteenth.
Helen wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, when I contacted D O R today, Tara Lynch, to ask her the status of the report, I had mentioned to her that I had spoken on my own doing with the Collins Center at U Mass. And ironically, in her reply to me, she said that she was glad to hear that, because their D O R report is going to include that recommendation for Millville and that use of the Collins Center should, center should be implemented, so. They are gonna recommend, and it was completely ironic, because I didn't know that at all, that they are going to recommend use of the Collins Center.
There are pieces in Mr. Haven's report that would give you a great. There are pieces in Mr. Haven's report that, that would give you a great.
Excuse me.
Plan or, or approach, to the problem, it's, it's, it's great, you know? These are the kinds of things that I had in mind.
But this, this option going with, um, the center, they do still use a screening committee, there's still a screening committee, it's just not a search committee, um, but as Mr. Repose said, there would have to be a specific charge created for what you'd want there.
Right, and I understand that, but I'm just saying, but, so what, Mr. Thuat has already said he'll be on whatever committee we, we form. Let's get the word out to get more people, but if that's not the.
I just thought maybe we could put the word out through the, our, through the web we have.
No, we're not gonna do that.
Why can't we do that?
We're gonna keep waiting.
The course is not. Huh?
I know, I know that, John. Okay, we have signatures to do, then we're gonna adjourn. We're all done, Mr. Wolf, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a boy. That's for you to sign.
Tom, what's your question?
Is it a workshop, or is that the next meeting, is there a workshop part of the meeting?
Well, we'll just do it during our regular meeting, we'll get started, we're gonna discuss what... Hopefully, they, they'll get us a report in enough time to review it before the meeting.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Otherwise, it'll be, all right, let's table it again, because, what are we gonna discuss, something we didn't read yet? And I'm sure it's more than that much. I'm hoping it is, 'cause it's been a long time.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
Make a motion to adjourn? I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.